This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
It sounds cool.
Sounds like, you know, like they do like metal, you know, the rock and roll.
Yeah.
I'm just like, I love it.
We call that reverb.
Hey, Hadel, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking for minutes, missing minutes, maybe we'll do that at the next meeting.
Let me go through the emails and see what I sent and what I didn't. I think I have them all except for, like all written, except for that one very large public hearing during the budget season that I still need to go back and re-watch that three-hour meeting to take down everybody's name. I think other than that, I have them all written, but what I have sent out via email, I need to go check.
All right, we did get the November 9th minutes.
You did.
So I need a motion to approve, and you guys have to approve them because I wasn't here.
Well, actually, on that topic, could I make a motion first to amend those minutes? Because I included you as a present when you were not.
Okay.
Actually, I don't, I don't have those minutes.
November 9th?
Yeah. The last ones that I have are the September 9th.
Well, I don't know what to do. Well, then, I'll tell you what. Tom, try to find which minutes are still not in, and we'll do them at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, and we'll include November 9th.
Yes.
So now, from the beginning minutes, the mayor's not here. She said she'd sign on, she's at a school superintendent search meeting. Public speak, well, you're not public, you can't speak, so there.
Say whatever you want.
Guess you could if you want to talk about something not on the agenda.
Nope.
All right, these are easy, I think, but the mayor wanted to talk to the one. Fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. You sure it's not fifty-eight cents, Hadel? I don't know. This is the same money, the same amount every time.
Fifty-nine, yeah, it's fifty-nine, it's every quarter, that's what it is.
I was kidding.
Oh, okay, I was like, what did I do wrong?
You never do anything.
No, that's not true.
Can we turn this down? Uh, so, uh, if we don't do this, East Hampton Media can't function, so I guess we should do it. Have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, sorry.
Second?
No, it's, it's just your...
You can't hear me now?
I can hear you, but I can't, it's not clear.
Weird, that's not the speaker.
Yeah.
Is it? I could turn my microphone up, maybe, let me see. Noise cancellation is on, does that help? Can you hear me any better?
No, it's still echoing.
No?
And sometimes it's scratchy noise. It's in whatever the system.
Well, that's just Anna's voice, I think.
I think this is, it's not weird, too. It's system, uh, it's not us here.
Yeah, it might be a latency issue or something. We've still got the copper cable here.
Well, anyway, we're dealing with the fifty-three thousand, and we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Just say aye, they're all here. I like it when we're all here. Okay. The mayor wanted to talk to this one. I, I don't have a problem paying for this out of, this is the eighteen thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty cents?
Yes.
Uh, out of cannabis to pay for the Mountain View School grand opening? You want to say anything to this, Hadel? Did you hear that? Did you want to say anything to this? She can't hear me. Can you hear me at all?
Hang on, I'm trying, switching, can you hear now?
I can hear you.
Yeah, it's better, I think, I don't know what was wrong. I switched the, um, the microphone. Sorry, what were you saying? Were you saying something to me?
Eighteen thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty cents out of cannabis for the Mountain View School grand opening?
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
I, I, there is no issue from my point of view.
Yeah, uh, we have looked into every month, like, you know, it has been requested by mayor. And we have approval from cannabis facilities that we can spend on any governmental unit that gives us, um, access to this money to spend on any, um, legal appropriation, which we would do as a city.
Uh, for you guys, the opening, remember that big opening?
Yeah.
That time?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my only, um, my only thing here, I'm happy to pay for this. Um, I'm happy to, to vote for this. Uh, I just want to put it on the record that if it's at all possible with these sorts of things, I'd sort of like to have these discussions about, and like vote on how we're going to pay for these things before they happen. You know what I mean? Like, if there's...
We can't.
Well...
It's, we could, but the mayor's the one who chooses how to pay for it.
Yes, so I guess I just sort of...
What? Omar.
I think we can. Because it's the same, like, we have the authority to say no. So at the end of the day, when someone is gonna, they have an event like this one, uh, I, the mayor have the authority to request to pay for X or Y funds. I a hundred percent correct on that. And I know that, and I, and to me, that's okay. But maybe I'm gonna say this, because probably comes our big concern is using eighteen thousand dollars for an event when the school department was short, or they claimed they were short and a budget to pay some services. I think the communication should be a bit better with, uh, with the community.
I mean, I guess that's part of what I was saying, just like, when you do a thing where you go and you spend a lot of money like this, and then come to us and say, hey, we spent a lot of money, could you transfer some funds from this account to this account to cover it? It feels like there's not really as much of an opportunity for us as councilors to say whether we think that that's actually an appropriate use of that money, because what are you gonna do?
That's what this meeting's all about.
But what are you actually gonna do? Say no?
Yeah, you can. In fact, that's the only thing we can do. You're right, but, but once the appropriation's made, which is the mayor's authority, we're the own, we're, our only authority is to say no or reduce it. We can do that. And if we said no, it's because we don't agree with the usage of this. I'm not saying that about this. But if we want to say we don't want to use this funds, can you come back to us with another? Or we could suggest why not use free cash or stabilization or whatever? But we don't have the authority, unless you want to have a private conversation with the mayor. But I, I think you're talking about some official way of doing it, and I don't see that. That's not allowed in China prior to the appropriation being put forward.
So, when, let's just say we're talking about infrastructure projects, right?
Okay.
We frequently have them say, hey, we are hoping to do some repaving work. We have not already done the repaving work. They want to do the repaving work. And they come to us and they request an appropriation out of free cash or whatever, right? And then that goes to the repaving work being done. But if there were something about that repaving work that were for some reason to be objectionable to us, and I'm not saying that this is objectionable, this is simply a matter of process, where I'm just stating that if there was something about that work that we felt that that should not be the priority, or that we felt that they were spending too much on it, or we felt like the way they were going about it was inappropriate, we would have an opportunity to comment on it before the work was done, as opposed to them spending money on the repaving work, and then coming to us and saying, hey, we did some repaving, can we have some money to cover the costs of that repaving? I am not saying that the mayor does not have the absolute authority to do it this way. I am simply saying that as a member of this committee, when possible, it would be my preference that we discuss five-figure expenditures before they happen and not after they happen, because it puts us in a somewhat awkward position as councilors, where the money has been, like, all these food trucks, all of this stuff, it was, the money's been spent, right? It's gonna be a major problem if we were to vote no. Now, I would have voted yes if it happened ahead of time. That's not what I'm saying.
Along those lines, I, I hear what you're saying. It's similar to the end-of-year budget deficits where we have to, they've already spent the money, but they're gonna run out of money, or they've run out of money, we have to bring money in from reserve to cover it. In this case, and I think a lot of the appropriations we get, money's been spent, they have to find a way to pay for it. The mayor's job is to find that way. We can say, we'd rather you not do that. Now, in other words, what you're saying, if I understand it correctly, is can we pay? Can we be told ahead of time, we're gonna need to pay for food trucks, pay for this? This is how I'm gonna pay for it, and you want to have a discussion prior to that?
Right, it's not, it wasn't...
It'd be nice if we did that, but all I'm saying is she doesn't have to.
I'm not saying that she has to. What I am saying is that this was a known thing ahead of time, right? They planned this event. And in planning the event, they had to have some idea of what it was gonna cost, and they had to have some idea of where that money is gonna come from. And I'm simply stating respectfully to all the people involved that as a matter of process, where possible, I think it would be better for us to have these things ahead of time, because if somebody were to feel like that was not necessarily an appropriate use of cannabis revenue, that would have been an easier conversation to have ahead of time. At this point, what are you really gonna do? You know, I, I just, like, what are you really going to do that it is not gonna exacerbate existing fiscal issues within the city?
I disagree. You can say no, because the city is a multimillion-dollar budget, has a reserve account. We don't like the fact, and I'm not saying this is the case for any of us here. We don't like the fact that cannabis revenue is being used. Can you please come back to us and use reserve or another account? You have that ability right now to do that. I, I'm not saying that, I have no problem with cannabis being used. Um, but that's where our authority lies. Hearing about it ahead of time, I, I'd love the mayor to be here to tell us.
And perhaps there's some...
What would happen, I'm sorry. Do you all want to say something?
In the same vein, like, I'll just be honest, I think this is an excessive amount of money to be spending on an opening for a school. Like, I'll say that, I'll make that. I, I think after the debate that we had with the school budget, et cetera, et cetera, I just think that this is, in, trying to use my words, be diplomatic, I, I...
Excessive is a good word.
I, I think it was excessive. I, I, I think it was, I think that we could have provided or supported local businesses and other ways to have bagels or donuts or whatever there that wouldn't have cost eighteen thousand dollars. And I thought that it was kind of an extreme expense for that, particularly given the whole budget conversation that we had regarding schools, et cetera. I just think there...
That's a conversation with the superintendent and the school department.
Well, and it is, and I just think that it's a conversation that we could have potentially, if they had, if they had come beforehand and said, hey, we want to do a party, we want to have this party, we want to have some food trucks at the party, and we want to have some stuff, and we want to bring these people in, and this is what it's gonna cost, we would have had an opportunity to review those expenses and perhaps provide some feedback about, well, are we sure we need this? Are we sure this is gonna be appropriate? Those things, once that money's already been spent, it's, you're right that we could say no, but that money's gonna have to come from somewhere, right? That money's gonna have to come from...
There's two, there's two parts to this.
Well, can I just...
Yep, sorry.
Like, that money is going to, that money has been spent, it's going to have to be, they're gonna have to be made a hole from somewhere. And if they're gonna have to be made a hole from somewhere, I don't see cannabis as being any less appropriate of a place to put it from as anything, but I think my views on the cannabis expenditures have been documented in other places. But like, I just think, again, I, I don't, we don't need to discuss this for an hour, I just, I do think that I just need to register that if we were having this conversation ahead of time about this amount of money, particularly in the context of the budget fight, we, or, I shouldn't say fight, but...
Discussion.
Tense and the extremely intense budget disagreement that we had this summer, and the fact that we were about to move into a second, or into a new budget season, and just given all of that, I think I would have, I might have had some feedback, and when these things happen in a way where the money, I, I understand that sometimes things happen like a firefighter blows out his shoulder, right? They don't know that someone to a firefighter's shoulder's gonna get blown out. Well, now they have to spend a bunch of extra money on overtime. There's nothing you can really do about that. It's not something that's planned ahead of time. And so when those sorts of, oh, hey, a, a police car, though, you know, it broke down, we need, it broke and we need it, or there was a crash, and now we need another one. Okay, yeah, fine, you didn't, you didn't, a boiler blew up, fine, you know? These are unforeseen things, that you gotta spend that money to fix it right away, and then you gotta figure out how to keep that from affecting the budget. So you go to us and we, we work something out. But when you're talking about a an event that I think was great, I went, I had a good time, but it was, you know, in the grand scheme of what we were talking about here, it was both expected and relatively discretionary. I don't understand why we are having this conversation now, rather than, I think that the better way to do this that would have allowed for a more sound conversation about this would be for us to have had this conversation while they were planning the event, not over a month after it. And that's just all I have to say about this. It does not change the fact that I, like, I'm not going to take, I'm not gonna put the city in a tough place by voting no on this. I'm just saying that moving forward, if there's something that we know is gonna cost five figures of dollars, and we know it's gonna happen, and we know what fund we're gonna ask for it from, I would prefer that that come to the city council ahead of that meeting and not after, because there might have been feedback from us or from the community about how to best allocate those resources, that now those conversations cannot be had because those resources were allocated, it's just a matter of how do we cover it? Um, and I'm happy to cover it, I just, I just do need to say this, because I think that a member of the community looking on, talking about an eighteen thousand-dollar party might wonder why we, any conversations about that ahead of time. I don't think that would be an unfair thing for a community member to talk about.
I would agree with everything you're saying, except there's the school departments involved. If they didn't ask the mayor to pay for it, and they decided to pay for it within their own budget, we wouldn't know about it until the end-of-year audit or whenever
Sure.
expenses were saved, because they decided it was a community event, they'd asked the mayor, she's not here, but I'm pretty sure the way this ran was the mayor was asked, can you pay for this for us, because it's a community event, and knowing the budget is tight for the school department, she said yes. So from that point of view, that's the process that's always gonna play out. It was the school department decided to spend the money. Most of the other examples you gave are examples of how we have spent money after it's been, I mean, approved money after it's been spent. This is, as you say, discretionary. And I don't disagree, but it's a school committee decision and a school superintendent decision to make, make this expense, right?
So, I mean, it is a decision to spend that money, but if they're going to spend it in a way that requires that we take money that could be spent on other things and spend it on this instead, I think that the appropriate thing, and I'm not, I'm not saying this to throw shade at anybody, like, it's fine, I, I, it, these things happen, it's hectic being in a city, but I think that if it was going to be a thing where this money comes from here, rather from, than from a department's operating budget, I would have preferred to have that conversation before the funds were expended, given that it was an expected expense.
I'm not gonna answer that, except the process is the process.
Omar. I think the difference is the, when that happened, the department head or, or department came to us to ask, requesting for any supplemental application, and they used the money, they used the money from a line item, right? We give them a budget, and because something happened in the budget, they have to use X or Y amount of money. And because they went short in that line, that's why they came to us. In this case, it's totally different.
Totally discretionary, it is, but, um, and the mayor could have said, please use your own budget.
Sure.
But the point is, the mayor is the one who decides, okay, I will ask the city council to pay for it using these funds.
I did not disagree.
She's asking us, so I don't disagree, but that would, your point, I think the process would require, ask the mayor to come forward. But these things are rare in the case where it's discretionary funding of something that is controversial, maybe excessive, whatever. But decisions are made, I don't know. I don't know if I want to continue this, because it's not a solution.
I don't want to talk for Councilor Peak, but I think he's concerned is will be, what about if we have another mayor, and then maybe we have something, an event like that, instead of spending eighteen thousand dollars, we'll spend seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and now the concern is from the council, it will be like, boy, the mayor have the authority to do that, but maybe those seventy thousand dollars will be, we can use them in something better.
And, and just, just to say, you're right that these are very rare, and in the time that I've been on the council, I don't recall anything quite like this that came up in that we are being asked to pay for it after the fact, but they definitely knew it was coming beforehand. That's the thing that to me is, again, and I'm not doubting the mayor's authority to make that decision and then come to us, I'm not, and I'm not gonna blow it up. I'm simply stating, as an elected official who has the right to talk during these things, that in the future, when these things come up, it would be my preference if, that if, if there's something you know you're gonna spend money, and you have time to have this conversation beforehand, I'd prefer to have it beforehand, that's all I'm saying.
I have no question about the process. And sound like the council's gonna say yes, but what about if the council were saying no? Now, if we say no, I mean, they don't have the appropriation for this, from, uh, for cannabis money, how, how the citizens will pay those bills?
Well, the question is, do we want to pay for the event, period? Or do we want to have it paid for in some other way other than cannabis? There are other accounts, but I have two ways. So if they say no, the council says no, we don't want to pay for this, the school department should pay for it, that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I don't want to put that on the teacher list.
No, but I'm saying, that's the, there's two ways it can go, we could say yes, three ways. Or we can say no, we want the school department to pay for it, not using money we could use for something else. Or it can be, we can ask the mayor, don't use cannabis, can you use something else? Those are our options, I'm not, I have no problem with this particular one, so. And I'm just saying, process-wise, that's the process.
Yes, and I, and I'm just saying, those are our options at this point.
Yeah.
Because the event has already happened. If the event had not already happened, we had this, we would have had the opportunity to have some other conversations here. Now, I might have said, looked over all the line items and said, you know what? You're right, every dollar here is completely essential, and this is a great use of funds. And they would be fine, but the point is, it's not really that, it's just that if we, we could have had this conversation beforehand, and if we could have, then I think we should have. And that's just, I'll leave it at that, I don't mean to drag this out any longer, that needs to be, but I do just need to register that this isn't like the way I, the order of operation that I prefer going forward if things like this are going to go down. And in the future, like, having said that, I, I might approach these things a little bit differently if something like this comes up again, where we had every reason to be able to discuss this before the money was spent and opted to discuss it after the money was spent.
The only issue in this whole thing is the school committee has, is the ones that said, okay, let's spend this money. If it was a different department, or maybe the board of public works, where they could authorize enterprise funds, but it would go to the mayor, there's, there's, there's the school committee that makes these decisions. Goes to your point, was it excessive or not? They decided it wasn't. But I think your point is well taken regarding they have a budget issue. Yet they spend this money. I don't know where those, I wasn't in the room when those conversations were had, but that's where it began.
Sure.
So, anyway, uh, I feel we should pay for it, so, yeah, no, you're not allowed.
It could have been a timing thing, too, because...
It was already spent, you mean?
Well, no, but I mean, if the school department decided this is what they were gonna do, and then after the fact, we're like, oh, well, maybe we'll ask the city to pay for it. Either way, it would have...
That might have been exactly how it happened.
And if that's what happened, then my, yeah, everything that I would say that potentially could sound like it was directed at the mayor would probably end up being directed towards that department. And I don't actually care, like, that's, I don't, like, I'm not mad at it, buddy. This is just a process, I'm a stickler for process sometimes. I, I don't know how the timing worked out, I'm sure that there's something like that. My point here is simply that someone had to know this money was getting spent beforehand.
When they started building the building, they knew there was gonna be an opening.
Well, anyway, Hadel, Hadel has a question.
I, I have a comment. Uh, the original idea was to use construction money, and, um, that will increase the debt exclusion. So that was another, that's where this whole conversation started. Again, I was in part of that school committee meeting, who said, what I do not know, but, um, it brought, it came to me as either we go for cannabis or construction money, or any other source. I refuse to, um, appropriate money from reserve, because it's taxpayers' dollars. Uh, we don't have parties for eighteen thousand dollars out of taxpayers' money. So the, the bottom line, it narrowed down to the, to the cannabis funds.
Okay, and that seems reasonable, but Hadel, just when were those conversations had?
I think it was after the meeting, um, after the school committee meeting, um, this whole started. And, um, it was sitting in my office for two weeks, because I needed some documentation, and I did not get that documentation. And this is a very touchy, um, expense, because, um, you know, it's pretty much your, we are partying on cities' money. That's what it, it, it looked like, um, bottom line. And, um, I think, uh, we have the, the, the agreement signed by cannabis establishment. So that's where this is coming out of cannabis, and I understand where, um, Councilor Peak is coming from, that we should be doing it upfront. And yes, we always practice that, that I don't let people overspend their account and then go back to council. They have to go to council first. But this was a unique situation where my hands were really off of school committee, so I couldn't say anything other than making sure that I have a proper documentation for my audit, and which I do have it.
The only thing I would argue, and I'm, and I'm not sure if this is the mayor's argument or the school committee's argument, is that the party wasn't for the city employees, it was for the community. They would argue that the community is what we were trying to benefit. Was it excessive? That's a debate.
It was a lovely event.
But it was an event for the community. So I would argue that using their money, and cannabis is tax revenue, or if we decided to use other revenues, it was for the community. But that's a debate we all have, that's a, that's a political debate, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
But it was a community event, it was a great event.
Yes.
So the argument from their side might be, well, yeah, but it was a party that everybody, a lot of people attended, and a lot of people liked, and this is how we wanted to treat them. Thank you for spending a hundred and nine million dollars, sixty-some of our money, so I don't have a problem. But anyway, we want to talk about this anymore.
Not really, I mean, I just wanted to register that there's just the, the way, the sequence of events here, to me, probably would have voted for this if they had come forward on it, because I do think it's important to bring up, or to show people the beautiful school that we built. I just think that the right way to have these conversations when it's possible, and I do think it was probably possible, is to do it upfront.
And, and Hadel brings up a great point. This is very unique in how it's being presented. When a, when a budget is short, they have to come to the council before she'll allow them to spend the money. Correct, Hadel? That's what you were saying. It has to happen in that, that kind of process, which is good.
Right, and, and so, I'm sorry, I keep adding on to this. I guess what I'm really trying to say here is, can we not do things like this more often? This is the first one I've seen like this, I'm fine voting on it, I just, if this becomes a regular, sometimes I find that on council, like, you do things that are a little weird, and then suddenly that really weird thing becomes like more normal. And I just want to say that, like, if this becomes a normal thing where funds get spent that we could have discussed beforehand, and we're talking about after, when it would be like kind of putting some, a department in a bad position if you voted no. If that becomes a regular thing, I'm going to probably have to take some...
Well, a lot of times we're put in that position, like, we have to pay an insurance bill, or we can't pay our insurance. Now, it's not coming to us after the money's been spent, but if we don't give them the money,
Yeah.
there's a real problem.
But that's not this.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying this is unique. Most of the time, I'd say... Yeah, that's why I'm saying this is unique, most of the time, I'd say ninety nine percent of the time, it's. We need the money because we have to pay and our hands are tied. Because if we don't pay for it.
Yeah.
Or the city doesn't pay for it, somebody's going to get a whole lot of problem. Insurance or whatever, fixing the water main, whatever it is.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to have a motion to approve eighteen thousand thirty five dollars out of cannabis to pay for the Mountain View School grand opening.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, aye aye aye, three to zero. I like it when everybody's zero. So Hadel, did you see my email?
Yes, I did.
I just wanted to go over these real quick. Um I was talking with her about, since we never got to it because we haven't had any meetings. The uh end of year summary, the revenues and things. Maybe it would be better if you shared them, I I I I'm going to try. Oh, I'm in the wrong thing, hold on, Hadel, I and I'm using a computer that I'm terrible at.
It will be difficult for me to share um because I have to remote from home to my computer and then share.
No, let me, let me just try and do this.
Sorry.
It's just hard to sh- share with uh. And and my trackpad is not working very well. I forgot my mouse, okay, I'm going to show you what I have up. Here we go, can you see that?
Yeah.
So these, what happened to it, darn it, did it not work?
No, it was there for a second.
There.
I know, there it is, okay.
You just make it bigger.
Oh, I don't know.
There's a little plus.
Oh, there on the bottom. I'm sorry, this trackpad is terrible.
One more?
Can you read it?
Yeah.
So most of the, there's a lot of things in the revenue side that are that are over. Like there's one hundred and thirty five percent penalties and interest on taxes, there's three hundred and nineteen dollars interest on three hundred and nineteen percent here. This is what I would call surplus revenue and unanticipated, correct? Is that a fair way to put it?
Now, the so thi- this goes to two fiscal prior fiscal year. When we originally put, um if you scroll up a little bit, okay, oh, stop, oh, the first page.
First page, okay.
Okay, so see up top, a little bit of, I wanted to show you the top, okay, stop, oh, yeah, right there. Okay, so see the first column says local receipt, the second column here, um I think um it says um budget estimates. And then adjusted budget tax rate recap.
Mm hmm.
And then it says actual revenue. So what is happening on on this spreadsheet is we estimated budget when we were doing the budget sometime in May. When council votes the budget, expense budget gets finalized at that point. However, the revenue budget gets finalized when we do tax rate recap, or I do tax rate recap. And that's where this adjusted tax rate recap budget is coming coming from. When we do this adjusted ta- tax rate recap, it's on the basis of the actual revenue. So we are, if we are talking about twenty twenty two fiscal year, we are talk uh we are, our base information or the data. Is from fiscal year twenty twenty one. So when you. Yeah.
So you're saying that's when you're basing that on twenty one, you're basing your budget on twenty one?
No, I'm, yes, budget for a revenue, so we cannot.
Twenty one, right.
Yes, we cannot estimate more than what we received in prior fiscal year. To um for current fiscal year's budget. So for example, uh if you see uh penalty in lieu of taxes, oh, stop, it it says four in first column. And the it says seventeen thousand one hundred twenty one seventy nine.
I'm not sure where we are.
Um, yeah, right there, where your cursor is, so this third section, where if you see the tax rate column, the very first column.
Yep.
Look at for, look for number four.
Payments in lieu of taxes, right here, okay.
So see how it says seventeen thousand one twenty one seventy nine?
Yep.
We did not budget for that, why? Because this one twenty one A agreement came during the fiscal year and we did not know how much money we are going to get at that point. But I had to put it into this category because that's what D O R asks me to do. So that's extra. We couldn't budget for it. Then if you scroll onto the page, um. Oh, wait, so um if you look at uh next call um section which says tax collector demands. We only budgeted forty five hundred dollars, but we actually collected seventy four thousand dollars. The reason for that was in fiscal year twenty twenty one during pandemic, mayor waived the fees. For those twenty five dollar or fifteen dollar demand fees. On tax bills to give relief to the community taxpayers. So we collected very small amount in prior fiscal year. But that same thing didn't happen, we did not waive it uh those fees in fiscal year twenty twenty two. However, I can't budget in twenty twenty two on the basis of twenty twenty one's lower estimates.
I totally understand all that, if you have a track record of ex- uh surplus revenue. In an account, like we're going to get the local receipts, and it shows it over three or four years. Why can't we increase our budget based on the fact we think we're going to get more? Or is it simply being conservative budgeting, which I don't disagree with?
No, it's um what happens is you we real, when we do the budget, we can't go by estimated revenue. We have to look into, it has to match at the end. So there are. Yeah, at some revenues, you can't predict. And there are only some revenues which can be predicted, and we only do the budget, and there is a D O R guidelines on these things.
Right.
So for example, if you go at the bottom, if you scroll a little bit more where it says um miscellaneous.
I have it, this is where I have it way over, you know, total local receipts, that's the total wall of this. And I'm just curious, you you're saying, even though maybe in fiscal year not, I'm not going, I'm going to skip the COVID. But if we have five years of oh of surplus in that total local receipts. We're not allowed to say, okay, let's estimate that we're going to get. A million dollars more, and I'm not sure, you're saying the D O R won't let you do that.
No, but D O R is going to let me, whatever is collected. As of when we are ready to do, when we are finalizing our budget sometime in spring. Whatever is collected as of that point for that fiscal year, that's the only thing we can. You take into consideration to estimate.
Okay.
And also, two years in a row, we have budget cut for one and a half, one and a half percent, so that added up. So it was three percent reduction in the budget. So I had to lower the estimates for local receipts.
Gotcha.
So what's going to happen is twenty twenty one, we had four million dollars free cash. Twenty twenty two, I don't know what the number is going to be, but I'm anticipating more than um four million, but I could be wrong on this. Uh it's not certified yet, but we are going to do, uh we are going to see a drop in next couple of years.
Mm hmm.
And in my history, it's gone up and down quite a bit, some years we didn't get anything. Two thousand eight, I keep going back to that year, that was a terrible year. But uh, okay, I was just curious because I know it's hard for the mayor and the treasurer and you guys to set up your budgets. And you have to estimate the revenue because you have to balance the budget.
Yeah.
And if you estimate the revenue, you know, we're uh we've gotten so much in certain taxes. Every year, and we've been always low balling that conservatively, should we increase it? So that we can give more to departments ahead of time, what you're saying is that's difficult to do.
So if I put it this way, expenses get set first and then we estimate revenues, it's not the other way.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
Not the other way.
Yeah, you learn something new every day.
But if you do that and you fi- figure your revenue doesn't match it, then you have to start cutting expenses, right? You go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
If you look at your revenues and you say, well, we can't balance, then you go back to the drawing board and say, we have to cut the budgets. That we tried to do, we can't do it, is that the process that usually plays out, okay? So I was just curious, and obviously, all of these surplus revenues. Along with things like uh if our revenue, total revenue is over, is 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 is. A certain million dollars or three million dollars over. And there's a bunch of departments that turned money back in, they didn't spend all their budget.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
That adds up to free cash, correct?
Uh that's only two piece of the free cash, so free cash, it's. Any surplus which is from um not, it's, hold on, any surplus from departments closes to free cash. Anything over as uh our estimated revenue closes to free cash, then. That that is considered as an undesignated fund balance in our accounting world. But then what a D O R does is they close, take that top number from as a closed balance of June thirtieth. They deduct whatever is outstanding on personal property and real estate. Because those two things are taken into consideration as a revenue budget. So they take those, so anything not collected from personal property and real estate as of June thirtieth. They reduce that from that top number. After that, if we have any deficits on any of the grants, special revenue, trust accounts or agency account. Those also gets deducted from that top number. What they add back is the deferred revenue for personal property and real estate, and that net amount is called our free cash.
Okay, so the free, all of that, they they have to cover the deficits wherever they may be. Um I mean, I didn't know it would be grants too and things like that.
You know, so all everything is considered.
So June thirtieth, you haven't collected all your property taxes, but you do collect eventually, the twenty twenty one taxes, they come in. They become, that becomes free cash in the future year, right? In other words, you're still collecting taxes, prior year taxes, right?
Yeah, it's a prior, so whatever is outstanding, if those amounts are not outstanding, that means we we collected them. And that becomes, it goes into the process of closing the balance to undesignated fund balance from revenue point of view.
Well, I'll tell you, Hadel, thank God you know what you're doing, because this is rather complicated.
It is the moral of the entire conversation.
That, did you hear what she said?
No, I did not.
That you know what you're doing, thank God, because.
Yeah.
But I'm learning, because if if. I never want to be mayor, but if I were mayor, I'd say, can't we estimate a little higher revenue? Look, look, we've made all this extra money the last few years in revenue, more property, et cetera. I want to budget more for this department. And you're telling us the process isn't that easy, that's basically the bottom line, okay?
So when mayor gives me the expense, so when mayor gives me the expense budget. I come up with revenue, if I can't come up with ra, I it didn't happen in last two years, three years, I've been wa- uh doing this revenue estimates. Um if there is not enough money, then I have to tell her that you have to cut somewhere.
But that's the only part I wanted to talk about was revenue, because that was on my mind. Is is can we estimate higher revenue so that we can give our departments more money, but it's not that easy. I don't have any issue with the expenses, they look like they were properly done. I don't know if you got to look at those reports, this is way back when she gave us the, I think, October, September. They were, they were. We're spending the money properly is what I'm saying, so.
Yes, because we have a really strong internal controls in place. Um with the purchase order system, I do not let anybody overspend from their budget. And every month end, I run expense control report. Before it goes out to the department, I make sure that they are not overspent by any, even a penny. And if they are, then they get a note and they have to fix it right then and there.
And you approve all of these. If 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 you guys look at supplemental appropriations, auditor's approval.
Right.
Which means you have to approve it before it gets to us, so.
Yes, so what I check, uh when I sign off on those appropriation, I check whether it's legit or not. Whether I we can pay out of whatever the revenue source they're asking us to be uh paid out of. And I also make sure that there is enough money to transfer those money from that account to whatever they're asking us to. Transfer to, because if there is no money, it's a deficit at the end of the fiscal year, you can't. You you can't deficit spend your savings account.
Okay, I just got a note from Nicole saying, I'm sorry, I missed this, oh, boy, I forgot. It's all right. Uh we would still be debating the cannabis one, so I'm kind of glad, glad you missed it, anyway, no, not really. Uh I have nothing else on your reports, they're excellent. Um uh maybe at the beginning of next year, Hadel, we'll go over another quarterly report, how we're doing. With revenue and expenses, but that would be in in January, and you'll be able to talk about the the first two quarters of spending, okay?
Uh wait.
We have questions.
I, so you're saying in January first meeting or the second meeting?
Whenever you're ready, not any meeting.
And is it only expense or you want expense and revenue?
We usually talk about how are we doing, do you have any concerns about our revenues? Um and we look at expenses too, but mostly I would be concerned. Uh if if you're not hitting the revenue, the way, we've never had a problem, but the way you expected it to be. When we did the budget, but that's, and also those quarterly reports that's on the, they are dependent on you. Being ready to give us any information, so.
Yeah.
Tom and Omar, did you want to ask her a question?
Sure, um and and just you might have something here too. I guess my question is, I I've looked this over and it, I mean, just given sort of how this process works, it makes enough sense. But I guess the question that I would ask is, is there anything in uh in this report? That stands out to you as noteworthy, either good or bad?
Either of you?
Either of you.
No, it doesn't, um because what happens is, because estimates are there and we we know that it's. It's done very conservatively. I get worried, I review this monthly and I get worried if um. Revenues are not there, or I I see the percentage in the report form. My first year, I remember, I didn't process that motor vehicle revenues doesn't come until like month of February. So when I was not getting any revenue in that line, I was stressing out, oh, my God, one point eight million dollars on stake right now, what's going to happen next, you know? So that was my worry, but then I learned that it doesn't happen till February or March. So when that those money starts coming in, it's just a good way to keep track of it. Um every time it hits the hundred percent, I'm not worried about those lines and majority of the time it happens. I can say it this year, but I am afraid we I would be able to say this next year.
Okay.
Omar?
I I just want to say, um the few of this, a member of this committee say thank you to Hadel. I just want to say publicly, uh I think Hadel is doing a great job.
Thank you.
The the amount of stress that I know that she's been through is is crazy. And and publicly, I want to recognize that she's doing a great job and I am happy that she is worthy something.
Bravo, I will echo that very loudly, I'm happy here with East Hampton.
Thank you.
If in a prior, in a future life, God says you're going to be an accountant, I will say no.
You know, you'll be surprised, I do want to do accounting because that's my passion.
Well, you have a head for numbers, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, anybody? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion to adjourn any further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Can we all try not to be remote from now on?
I'll try.